Okay, I'd like to call the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Economic Development Corporation to order for this November the 8th. That will call please.
Councilmember Friedman, Garpadian?
Yes.
Garian?
Here.
In here.
Oh, yes.
Here.
I knew what you were going to say.
Did I say, yes, I'm in here?
It's quite all right. Board members, Friedman, Garpadian?
Here.
Garian?
Here.
Sinanian?
Here.
Chair Devine?
Here. Next item?
Next item is the report of a clerk's agenda for the November 8, 2016. Joint public meeting of the City Council and Economic Development Corporation was postponed on Friday, November 4, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Before you, as the Director of Community Development regarding business expansion grant program, one is council motion approving business expansion grant program guidelines. He is a council motion authorizing Economic Development Division to enter into an agreement with Antaeus Theater Theater in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for business expansion costs. I see as a council motion authorizing the Economic Development Division to enter an agreement with Brew Yard in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for business expansion costs. He is council resolution approving government code section 53083, report to commence with agreement with Butterscotch. And he is a council motion authorizing Economic Development Division to enter an agreement with Butterscotch in an amount not to exceed $200,000 for business expansion costs.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, ma'am. This is a rather exciting afternoon. Several years ago, when the Economic Development Corporation was established, we wanted to seed it with opportunities to help put in place a program that would grow economic activity, that we could make well-placed investments and have those investments yield benefit, not just to the city, but to the overall economic environment vibrancy of the city. So, we have the inaugural Business Enhancement Grant Program before you, and it's only fitting then that we have Tamar Sad making her inaugural presentation to the City Council and Economic Development Corporation as she is the staff person assigned to this program. So with that, Tamar, would you come on up?
Well, shall we kind of break a champagne bottle over you or anything?
Let's see how she does.
No pressure. I have high hopes. I have high hopes. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Devine and members of council. I am here today to bring forward a business grant program for your consideration. Since the dissolution of redevelopment, Glendale has remained committed to new and innovative ways to positively impact the city for residents and businesses. Through economic development programs, City Council has demonstrated commitments to assist and support the expansion of job opportunities, stimulate economic development, improve the physical environment, and implement, assist, and support development activities. In March 2012, the City Council took a major step to reclaim the importance of proactive economic development by amending Glendale Municipal Code 2.30. The amendment was both a policy statement on the significance of economic development and a framework for restoring economic development authority to the city. Included in the authority was to take a vigorous business program to aid in the attraction or retention of qualifying commercial mixed-use or industrial uses through activities that improve residential value, increase visitation, and expand the city's tax base. The next step in this ordinance is to implement a specific program and respective guidelines, which leads to the introduction of the Business Expansion Grant Program. The grant program is aimed to help current and incoming businesses expand to maximize the public good. Through major private investment and minor public assistance, these businesses will contribute greater sales tax revenues, make major investment in infrastructure, create more jobs, enrich Glendale with unique opportunities, and most importantly, serve as a catalyst for additional business growth. This is the next generation of incentive programs following ones geographically specific to the Arts and Entertainment District and San Fernando Creative Corridor. Those programs, which focused on exterior facade improvements and some infrastructure improvements, went away with redevelopment funding. This is a chance to renew those assistance programs with local funding. While the previous programs had to be focused in redevelopment project areas because of state regulations, the business expansion grants have the ability to create amenities and assist businesses citywide which meet economic development goals. Guidelines for the program include reimbursable grants of up to $40,000, with the exception of special circumstances which warrant greater allocation. Grants would require a 25% matching participation by the applicant. Eligible improvements include heating and air conditioning systems, fire safety systems, exhaust systems, and other extensive improvements that serve as lasting upgrades to the building and usability of the space beyond any one single tenant. Specialty equipment is also eligible when it significantly expands business growth. Among other submittals, applicants will be asked to submit a written project description conveying how they improvement contribute to economic development through the furtherance of arts and culture, enhancement of quality of life, improving the building use, function, or future marketability, sales tax generation, jobs creation, diversification of the local economy, and reduction of critical vacancies. Applicants will also submit a pro forma with estimated project costs and revenues, additional tax revenue generated, a lease agreement demonstrating a minimum remainder of five years, the comprehensive and semi-permanent nature of the improvements, and use of prevailing wage labor with respect to construction paid for by grant funding. For grants over $40,000, an operating covenant may be required, and reimbursements may occur over multiple years predicated on a performance-based schedule. Participant eligibility and denials would be based on administrative screening with final approval by the City Council. We currently have three applicants to this program. The first applicant to the program is Antaeus Theater, which is currently building out their new home in the city's growing Arts and Entertainment District. Antaeus is hailed as one of the top intimate theaters in Los Angeles and has experienced tremendous growth over their 24-year history. After outgrowing their North Hollywood location, they signed a 10-year lease with options for multiple renewals in March 2015 and will be occupying a building that has been vacant for over a decade. Antaeus combines live theater with education, keeping the space occupied throughout the day and evening. This program would create 100 jobs, increase interest through the district specifically down Maryland Avenue, and drive additional business in the downtown. With 207 days of rehearsal, 197 days of performances, and 137 days of classes, Antaeus will also be a big driver of employees and patrons to the downtown. Antaeus has already invested almost $1.9 million and is requesting $40,000 for their HVAC system. This will permanently improve the building, which has been chronically vacant for over 10 years. As a nonprofit, the grant will allow Antaeus to focus funding on other improvements in the building for their cultural and educational hub, which aims to provide enrichment through the arts. Our second applicant is Brew Yard Beer Company. Brew Yard opened in Glendale in December 2015 as Glendale's very first and currently only microbrewery. Co-owners Sherwin and Kirk are ingrained in the Glendale community and have plans to grow their small business here. Brew Yard has invested over $500,000 and is requesting $40,000 to be used on specialty equipment, a bright tank, a uni-tank fermenter, and an automatic keg washer to help them expand. This new equipment will be used to actually double the volume of craft beer and therefore sales Brew Yard produces and add a total of nine jobs. Glendale's current 18-hour-city initiative includes the attraction of breweries. As the craft beer market grows in Southern California, Glendale wants to offer the same amenities as found in other regions. Breweries are family-friendly versions of the traditional tavern, and as a product that can be widely sold and consumed, Glendale-branded beers further the city's goals of marketing to and attracting new individuals and businesses. Craft beer really is all about that locally-made flavor. So Brew Yard proudly brands and markets itself as a Glendale-made product on their tap handles, T-shirts, social media, and glasses. Since Brew Yard's opening, L.A. Weekly has dubbed the area "The San Fernando Craft Beer Corridor", which expands past the borders of Glendale on both sides. The marketability and name recognition has led to the application of two additional breweries currently in the city's conditional use permit process, with even more eyeing the area. This expansion would not be possible without the grant's assistance. Our final applicant is Butterscotch Restaurant, which is proposed to be located in the legendary towers at 300 North Central Avenue. Butterscotch will be investing almost $1.2 million for the build-out of this high-quality restaurant and is requesting $200,000 to be dispersed over a four-year period to pay for their air conditioning, fire safety, and exhaust systems, as well as other permanent improvements to the building. The Butterscotch brand has been specifically developed to cater to the recent boom of millennial and Gen X households in downtown Glendale with a bar-forward, patio-centric, upscale, fine casual dining experience. Offering contemporary California cuisine with a strong Southern influence, Butterscotch will offer a mix of traditional seating and lounge seating and will be operating for dine-in and delivery for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and late-night hours, plus a curated brunch experience on weekends. Butterscotch will be operated by the Angelina Hospitality Group, which operates L.A. Hotspots, the Hudson, and the Churchill. The city is seeking operators which add to the 18-hour-city initiative to round out Glendale's downtown, and a restaurant of this caliber would enrich the north end of the downtown, which is currently hungry for such amenities and is currently not as populated by pedestrian activity as a rest of downtown. This project is estimated to create 178 jobs, increase sales tax revenue, and most importantly, serve as a catalyst for other operations along Central Avenue. This project would not be financially feasible without the grant's support from the city. The total cost of this program for this year is $130,000 for the three applicants and is already budgeted for in the Economic Development Programs budget. This would cover the program costs for Antaeus, Brew Yard, and the first-year installment of Butterscotch. The remaining $50,000 a year for Butterscotch may be allocated in the budget over the next three fiscal years, along with two to three additional applicants per year. A conservative estimate of new revenue generated by the three applicants is $40,000 annually. As these businesses are expected to serve as a catalyst for further development, this revenue generation is expected to increase each year. 10-year projections for this investment from direct and indirect sales tax, property tax, and synergistic growth is $580,000. The majority of this estimate would be from the restaurant. While theaters do not charge sales tax on tickets, theaters and their associated classes and performances produce new visitors to the downtown. Nationally, arts attendees spend an estimated $25 per person, per event, in the surrounding community as a direct result of their attendance. This is outside of the ticket cost. Local businesses that cater to such audiences, such as restaurants, taverns, and retail, reap the rewards of this economic development activity and produce new sales tax for the city. It is important to note that this was a chronically vacant location, so all indirect sales tax and interest to this area would be a net positive for the city. Breweries themselves are not high-sales-tax drivers either because products sold wholesale to other businesses are not charged sales tax. Local breweries do sell to local restaurants and taverns. About 35% of Brew Yard's annual distribution sales come from sales to other Glendale businesses, and so the sale of Brew Yard beers at the restaurant and tavern level provide opportunities for cross-promotion and capturing new sales tax there. A use tax is applied to larger breweries and may be applied as the brewery grows. The fiscal benefit from breweries really comes from marketing, tourism, and new interest in their associated taprooms, which do charge sales tax. As seen in other regions such as San Diego and Denver in Colorado, it is a clustering of breweries, taprooms, and taverns that really synergizes growth and creates not only a destination regionally, but also for tourists. We have an opportunity to facilitate the establishment of this growth here in Glendale opposed to the neighboring communities along the craft beer corridor. Aside from sales tax, these new developments all generate increased property tax fees associated with their build-outs, and most importantly, citywide business growth. This concludes my presentation on the business grant program and the guidelines and our three applicants. Our three applicants are also here in the audience. If you have any specific questions for them, or I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
If I may ask, very nice, very nice presentation. During, just right before you got to the end of talking about the breweries, you mentioned the amount, I think, of revenue that they're going to bring to the city, and you mentioned $40,000 per year. And I wasn't, you went through that a little bit quickly, so I wasn't able to kind of, was that for one of the establishments? Was that for all of them?
For all of them.
Forty, it would generate $40,000 a year?
In revenue.
In revenue, sales tax?
From direct and indirect sales tax, property tax, and the future growth that we're projecting.
All three?
For all three.
Combined?
Right.
I'm asking that for future reference, so.
As the program moves forward, as these develop, as these businesses expand in their own right, they were specifically selected because we believe they will serve as catalysts. So, revenue generation moving forward, we expect would be greater.
Thank you. Okay, now, I have three cards. Would you like to hear, my colleagues, would you like to hear from the owners of the establishments?
I certainly would.
Before we begin? Thank you, Tamar. Thank you, Ms. Sad. So let's start with John Sloan and Anna Rose O'Halloran von Antaeus. Sorry, Anna Rose.
Oh, Halloran.
Oh, Halloran, that's right. Oh, Halloran.
Good afternoon. My name is John Sloan. I'm the co-artistic director of the Antaeus Theater Company and...
I'm Anna Rose O'Halloran, the executive director of Antaeus Theater Company.
And we'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for inviting us to speak here today and for inviting us to apply for the Business Expansion Grant. Tamar did such an amazing job speaking for us. I was hoping maybe we could hire her to speak on our behalf at other functions.
Oh, I should get the champagne, right?
Yeah, yeah. Or we could have a craft beer, perhaps. So as some of you already know, Antaeus is one of the most acclaimed and well-respected theater companies in the Los Angeles area. And I think the day that we signed our lease to build a new theater at 110 East Broadway is going to go down as one of the most important days, in fact, the most important day in the history of our theater company. As I drive up and down Brandon Central and I see all these stores and restaurants going up and the new apartment buildings, and then I go to our theater and see the stage floor being put in and the seats, well, the seats haven't arrived yet, but the walls, it just gives me a thrill that our company is going to be a part of this incredible growth of this city, and we're so looking forward to becoming a fixture of the Glendale arts community, really becoming Glendale's theater company. When I hear about all these restaurants and bars and things like that, I think of my parents in Cleveland who subscribed to a theater company there, and six days, six times a year, six or seven times a year, they get together with two other couples, and they go downtown, they have dinner, and they go see a show. It's one of the best parts of their lives, and that's really sort of what Antaeus is all about, bringing community members together with the arts and engaging them in conversation and enjoyment. Not only do we put on productions, thanks to our new space, we'll be able to put on five productions a year. We also have an academy where we train actors. We have an arts education program. We've already begun talking to the Glendale City Schools about partnerships there, bringing theater to the kids. We also have a playwrights lab where playwrights come in and develop new work. So there's a constant stream of activity at our company that is just really very exciting. And the thought of a modern air conditioning system is really thrilling for a theater company when you think of our old space where there was a constant rattle going through the most dramatic, quiet moments of our, okay, our time. So, thank you for letting us be here. Any questions?
Yeah, I thought I heard Tamar saying about an eight-track system. What, is that what? Antaeus eight-track system?
HVAC.
HVAC, yes.
I was like, I don't know what an eight-track is.
HVAC.
Hopefully we'll have something a little more advanced than an eight-track.
Old school, old school.
So if you have any questions for us, I know I ate up all our time because I'm excited to be here, but if you'd like to ask us any questions.
When are you signing your lease, or you already have?
We already have. We are in the middle of our first year of our 10-year lease, and then we have the option to renew for the next 40 years at 10-year increments with first and last write-of-refuse.
And you're investing $1.9 million in this facility?
That number has actually gone up. We've raised 2.2 million because our construction costs increased. So, the overall construction costs are at 2.5, and we've brought in 2.2.
How big is your space?
It's 7,600 square feet.
And that's exactly where that is. That was the old Dell gateway, yeah. Okay, and you're creating 100 jobs, new jobs, basically. Okay.
And how much seating?
Sorry. Sorry.
Following up on this square footage, how much seating will there be?
We have two theaters, so one will fit 80 patrons, and the other is a black box, so it'll fit 45 in there.
It's very intimate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I attended your soft opening last year, and it was amazing. I mean, even the introduction was a theater, so it was like a musical all over you. It was pretty nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does staff have anything to say about the pro forma or anything bring to our attention?
No, I mean, there, I think there's, it's interesting when you look at the three different recommendations that we have. The idea that the economic development factor for Antaeus is, it's a little more tangential, but it's elemental to the Arts and Culture District. People are going to come to this destination, and then they will spend that money around. So to the extent that it's the $40,000 version of this program, that seems to be suitable, and it fits. You'll hear, I'm sure, from the folks at Brew Yard where there is a more direct, but also still somewhat indirect at the same time, revenue generation model where sales tax plus the sales tax that emanates from the activity. And then lastly, you're going to hear from Butterscotch where it is almost entirely focused on the operation that is not there today, and then whatever happens ancillary to what is now a little bit of a dead zone. So we are very comfortable in our recommendations of all three of these. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be bringing them to you if we hadn't vetted them and think that they will, I think the term that Tamar used is catalyst. We're looking to catalyze, we're dropping pebbles in three different parts of the city and looking for those ripples to expand.
Any other questions for the? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can't wait, can't wait. Kirk Nishikawa from Brew Yard.
Hi. Just, once again, just like them, I want to thank all of you for even just entertaining the idea of being a part of this, and I appreciate being able to actually apply for a grant. I guess before we're, before I can even start, how many of you have actually been to a small craft brewery, about 4,000 square feet? Like, how many of you are actually familiar with this culture, the craft brewery culture? Yeah, okay, good.
I don't drink, but I've been to several.
Okay. You went for the aesthetic.
Yeah, yeah. Designated driver.
Some of my best friends brewing. Designated driver.
Right, right, right. One thing that's very unique about craft breweries, in a sense, I know that Glendale has been trying very hard to create like this 18-hour nightlife with bars and very beautiful like places to be. A brewery is, although a brewery is a part of that lifestyle, it's actually a lot more relaxed. It's a lot more family-oriented, in a sense, because minors are actually allowed. If you go to breweries, especially during the daytime, you'll see strollers, you'll see carriages, you'll see kids running around. And when you really look at the overall demographic, it's actually kind of shifted toward 30s to, you know, 60s, you know, in terms of what they expect from a place where they can drink kind of in peace without too much rowdiness going on. We also have, we also have minimal tap hour, our hours are minimal where we're not staying open super late to kind of invite sort of the more questionable crowds. Like, we close at, we're allowed to stay open only till about 11 o'clock. We open at 4:30, 1 o'clock on the Saturdays. It's kind of a really nice setup for me, just because it's safer, it's more predictable, but you can still have people enjoy themselves with alcohol and, you know, with beer. It's not, it's definitely something that I would say that a brewery in itself is a very special thing for a city, and you have no idea how proud we are to be the first full distribution brewery in Glendale's history. It's also somewhat of a burden to us in the sense that we're very, we are trying so hard to make you guys proud. But what makes breweries so special is that not only can we create revenue in our taprooms, our first year was actually quite phenomenal from what I was expecting, but from what I hear from taprooms, half our size, we can, we could triple that. And then there is also the avenues of distributing. Although the city doesn't get a ton of money directly from that, it's like a marketing scheme where our beers with Glendale, California are all over the city, even the state, even the country, you know, depending on how big we can get, so.
Comments, questions?
Question?
Question, Ms. Nijarian?
How are you? Were you on the radio the other day?
Yeah, excuse me?
Were you on the radio the other day doing an interview?
Yeah, actually, oh, was that the, was that either Careth 101 or?
Heard you somewhere.
Yeah, actually, we were...
You mentioned Glendale a lot in those interviews.
Yeah, like...
Especially after what we might be doing in a few moments.
Yeah, we were on a radio, a quick radio commercial. We were actually on KCAL 9 a couple weeks ago.
Good, so be sure you plug the city.
We always do. Like, we are actually very, very, like, this is our first version of our shirt, but actually, all the shirts we have now actually say Glendale, California on it. All the coasters we have say Glendale, California, all the tap handles, you know, like, we're very proud of our city.
Okay, next question. Are your gallon jugs refillable, or are those one-use only?
Our 64-ounce growlers that we do have, yeah, you can, they're totally refillable. You can also bring in your own growlers as long as all the labels are covered from other breweries that you may bring in from.
Okay, good, because my son was telling me that it's refillable. I go, what are you talking about? And so the next thing I want to do is, I'm very, I'm very excited that the moniker of the San Fernando Craft Beer Corridor has been laid on this road. I'd like to move that we get rid of the creative corridor name, and this is more hip.
Probably is, yeah.
You know, I'll leave that to my colleagues to mull that over, but I think would certainly support, support your business and get people thinking about...
Oh, yeah, like, actually, that was...
Their whistle as they come down San Fernando, so.
Definitely. Like, I, in our very first article we were in, L.A. Beer Week, when we actually just found the spot, I don't know if I could take full credit for it, but I did say the term San Fernando Road Craft Beer Corridor because when you look at it, there's so many, like, you have Eagle Rock Brewery, one of the first brewery, you know, the first brewery here in modern times. Then you go further up, you have Glendale Tap, which is a phenomenal craft beer place, and then you have Golden Road, and then you have us. And so I just foresee this whole place, and actually, Tamar's been working on it, you know, like, very diligently to see if we can kind of fill in a couple more breweries. And I, the greatest thing about breweries is that, yes, it is competitive, but we do better in clusters. Like, it's more of an attraction, like, from people out of the city that go there. I mean, the craft brew scene has done wonders for cities like Torrance and Long Beach. You know, like, you can't throw a rock without hitting a brewery now, and then everyone goes down there. I mean, if you said, yeah, let's go down to Torrance, I mean, that statement, you know, five years ago, probably wasn't really in anyone's vocabulary yet, so.
Good, okay.
And this grant will allow you to buy equipment that will increase your supply or ability to produce?
Yes, in simplistic terms, yes. More, more importantly, though, it allows me to be more aggressive right now. Because right now, I'm kind of assuming we're at 70% capacity with our tanks. You know, we can't, you know, in terms of amount of growth, in terms of whether we can hire people, it's not quite there yet, it's all sweat equity. But if I know that something like this is in the pipeline, it does take several months, three to four months to get these tanks, I can already start planning for it. I can already start talking to the distributors to ramp it up and, you know, get it out there. And so that's kind of what I'm hoping for.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next speakers, I don't know if all three of you want to come up or just one of you. I have Sorgeet Soni, Dilip Avnani, and Brandon Hawkins.
Good afternoon. I'm Sorgeet Soni. Nice to meet you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be before you. Let me introduce my partner, Dilip Avnani, who is also the principal or a majority owner of the restaurant Butterscotch. And Brandon Hawkins is with us. He's from Angelina Hospitality, and they're the curators of the restaurant and designers of both the flavor and the experience, and can share more details about it. If you allow, let me take just a minute to tell you about how this all came about and why we think this is a very important decision. You know, we were at the starting block as one of the first projects to go out to break ground in the downtown core as the industry and the housing market were tanking. We're near the end, and I think we're ready for our CVO finally. But for us, going in with a development product at that time on Central in California was a challenge. There was really nothing going on along the central corridor. And I fact, I actually bemoaned that we don't have more retail being developed along Central. And we felt very strongly that our position at the corner of California And we felt very strongly that our position at the corner of California and Central gave us an opportunity to create a destination product that is going to bring people to Central and give them a chance to recognize the tremendous opportunities, beauties, and businesses that operate there. So I think this is a good move, and this was a very big challenge for us as we struggled with candidates for leasing. We knew we wanted a restaurant there, we knew we wanted that to be adjacent to and functioning integrally with our public space, which houses our two very large six-foot by 12-foot monitors with custom-developed art of underwater photography that's interactive and allows people to cause effects on the art. And we felt that for the public to really appreciate and enjoy this art, they need an environment that accompanies that, that services their needs. So we created for this space the notion of having a wonderful restaurant there that would be open early in the day, go late in the evening, would be a meeting spot for, for locals. And as we began to build our building and develop our, our little community of 80 units and live work and, and commercial spaces, what we began to see is that, in fact, there's a need, a huge need, because we've got 170 units across the street from us, we've got 330 just to the north of us, we've got Altana that's come on, we've got all these, and we've got about 1,000 units to the north of us and another 1,000 units to the south of us, a block away, two blocks away on the outside. And what's missing in this area, we've got a wonderfully developed brand avenue, and we've got great restaurants and businesses that draw in that direction, very little is drawing on the other side to Central. So when, in my many conversations with Vince and economic development and business development, we had talked about what ought to go into that iconic corner that we've got and how best to use it, we kept explaining the difficulties we were having trying to find a restaurateur that could go in there. The cost of a built-out in restaurants is extremely expensive, and even though we had the advantage of ground-floor shell that we were doing in a new construction building, it still is very expensive. But with this grant, it brings it within reach, and we've got commitment from our restaurateurs and our operators that they feel we can do this now with the help that the city is providing. And we really look forward to a very positive, what we hope will be an iconic destination for people in Glendale. I'll turn it over to whoever you may have questions for, either myself or Brandon with respect to what the restaurant really is going to be like and what kind of food you've got questions about.
Well, I thought I saw homemade pasta in one of the slides, is that, am I right?
Almost everything that they've done is sinful, so I'll let you turn to the Director of Sin.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thanks for having us here today. To answer your question directly, yeah, that was actually Chef Steven Trujillo, who works at The Churchill. He worked for Chef Thomas Keller for multiple years from Bouchon Beverly Hills and then French Laundry and has helmed a number of restaurants. We retained him recently and he came on to The Churchill. So we've recently revamped the menu there. He will have a lot of influence and oversight in the development of the full menu at Butterscotch as well. But we really pride ourselves on integrating ourselves into the community and producing food that isn't necessarily pretentious. We want to do something that's accessible and familiar, but do the best versions of that food that we possibly can. So, you know, everything from really well-done burgers to handmade pasta to, you know, slightly more elegant dishes, one of the pictures up there was the Pasta Nero, which is, you know, handmade pasta with the black clams that we source locally here in California. So, so yes, very, a big emphasis on locally sourced ingredients and food that the community will find both accessible and desirable.
Thank you, questions?
Yeah, so you are going to invest $1.2 million into this restaurant overall and creating 178 jobs? That many people work in a restaurant?
That comprises both the temporary and the full-time labor that goes into developing the restaurant. The restaurant, I suspect, will have full-time staff around 60, I think?
Yes, both of our restaurants currently that operate in West Hollywood, the Hudson and The Churchill, depending on the time of year, there is a little bit of seasonality to it, but we have between 60 and 80 employees on staff at any given time. We also pride ourselves in compensating our employees very well with full compensation packages. We do provide health care for our full-time employees and really do our best to be great employers.
And to answering on the rest of that, the balance of the staffing that's indicated is involved during construction period as well as vendors supporting the business locally within the city, because we intend to buy as much locally as we possibly can.
I appreciate that.
Comments, questions? What's the price point of your restaurant?
It varies depending on the service. For breakfast, I think we're looking for a total ticket price somewhere between $15 and $20, which is a little bit nicer, a little bit more upscale than some of the competition now currently. For dinner, we're looking at an average ticket closer to $30, and that includes beverages and, and food.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you all, okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a question, I have questions for staff, but I'm happy to have Mr. Ropetingo.
Thank you, one quick question, so the, for the restaurant, there are $50,000 a year for four years, but the other two applicants get $40,000, that's it, right?
That's correct, so the, the restaurant with the larger amount that is somewhat outside the bounds of the, the original program would be secured by an operating covenant. So they have to operate in order to trigger the annual payment by the city. And on the other two, it is done, as you saw, on a reimbursement basis. On Brew Yard, because there are real assets, we would secure those assets, there is a significant aftermarket for the equipment that's being purchased, very little is, is new, it's all recycled post-original market. And on Antaeus, the idea that it is a historically vacant building and now it will be improved, so the idea, similar to what we did with the Museum of Neon Art, that, God forbid, if something were to happen and they could no longer occupy, at least now you have a fully outfitted building that is now suitable to somebody else coming in. So the, the city is, or the corporation is intending to expend these dollars as safely and as wisely as possible to, to get downstream benefits should the worst occur.
Yeah, what I like about these three applications is that they have, they're investing a large amount of, you know, millions of dollars in their, in their businesses, so we are helping them out, unlike some of the other applicants that we had in the past, but that's not a problem, but this, I like the idea, so.
So if I can ask Mr. Ochoa, so this is a grant, we're giving this money, I mean, we're giving, this money's not going to come back to the city.
The concept is that ostensibly it is repaid through-
Improvement-
Revenue generation.
Revenue generation, in the case of Antaeus, it's going to be improvement to the building and of course, all the public benefits that we also recover.
That one is probably more a focus of policy, that the council has said we want that activity. But even with, with Antaeus, when you look at the presentation and staff are looking at that average art customer, so to speak, that comes in, they're dropping money at other locations around town that otherwise they wouldn't necessarily be in town.
Right.
We're looking at these catalysts.
So let me ask, ask you this question, and, and this is what's going to dictate as to how I vote on this, because I'm, I have a very conflicted view on this right now. Not Antaeus, leave him, leave him aside for a second. The restaurant and the brewery, okay, so we're, all of a sudden, we're getting into the business of providing grants to businesses that want to, let's say, food industry businesses that, that want to come to Glendale. So if next year, another brewery, another restaurant come in and they, they apply for a grant, how are we going to start differentiating? And they're all legitimate and they're all good, and there's, and all of a sudden, the year after, there's 10 of them, and they're all good and they're all legitimate, and where do we draw the line? Once we're in this, once we've done this, where do we stop?
That's a great question, because I, I think the, the short answer is you're looking at pioneers, ostensibly. To the extent that the Brew Yard is at a stage of their development that they could flow back into that Atwater area or Eagle Rock area, but we want them to put down roots. And when, as they put down roots, as you heard Mr. Nishiwara talk about, others will cluster around. So I'm not telling you that we would never invest economic development dollars with another brewery, but it would have to be something very unique from what you're doing now, another pioneer in another way. Butterscotch is looking at this corridor that needs another anchor of all-day-long 18-hour service for what is transforming that street. Again, I wouldn't tell you that we wouldn't invest in another signature restaurant, but it would have to be another form of that type of pioneer attitude, that they're doing something that doesn't exist now. To the council's credit, I mean, you're, it's, you've called the shot. Back when we stood up the corporation, council had said, go get us something that we haven't seen before. No disrespect to the Chipotle folks, don't bring me another Chipotle. Bring me, and I don't want fast casual of any kind, bring me the tablecloth, bring me that destination. And so your staff has dutifully bird-dogged the, the market and is bringing you back these opportunities.
It's a lot of history to this Chipotle comment, by the way.
But it was a great comment, it was a great comment. And, and, and that's the beauty, and that's why I think it's, it's kind of cool to be a, a local elected official, that you get to say, go make this thing happen, and if you have good staff, they go make that thing happen. So again, we would, we would recommend to you, the short answer to your question is, we would recommend investing wisely in pioneers. So that next brewery that comes down, you don't necessarily need to go do that, because they probably will go just to be somewhere near Golden Road in, in Atwater and Glendale Brew Company here. And to the extent we can get them accelerated into the next phase of their business plan, they're pretty well locked into Glendale. Not that I'm counting chickens before they hatch, but, but we look at pro formas, we look at business plans, and if we didn't have that comfort, we would not recommend to you.
Okay. Any others? I have a question about the 25% matching participation. Can you give me an idea what that entails?
Yeah, so if the, if the total cost of, of this improvement was $40,000, the city could put in 30, and then the applicant would be expected to put in that 10. So they are expected to also participate in the purchase of that, that out, that equipment or that improvement or the construction that's taking place, so it isn't just the city helping expand the business, the business is participating in that expansion as well. And that's a similar format to what we had with the facade improvements as well.
That's, hold on a second. That's, the 25% is for the project that we're helping them with, that have to put in the 10, like, $10,000, for that particular project that we're giving them the grant. Correct. Okay. Well, I think from what I read in, in the, the staff report and other places is that this is kind of the next generation of incentive programs. This is the way that cities are attracting new and different types of, of businesses. I think she, Tomar was right, we are, and I love that phrase, we're hungry for, another, a nice restaurant here in Glendale. I'd like to see it be of medium price but high-quality food. I think Antaeus is going to be spectacular and the brewery will be a lot of fun for people. I think this is a great idea to improve the usability of our vacant spots. I think it provides businesses with the ability to expand, so I don't know, do I have a motion? Another question?
If I, yeah, I have a question.
Najarian?
Yes, we are, we are negotiating for that high-end brand that we're looking for. If, if, if the owners of Butterscotch decided to, to go in a different direction, but the landlord wanted the relationship to continue, they would have to effectively get the corporation to assign the operating covenant to somebody else that would, that you would deem suitable.
I see. I don't believe in it.
So the other question is, actually was raised by Councilmember Sinanya. This is great news to a lot of businesses, that's a little loud, this is great news to a lot of businesses who are thinking of coming to Glendale. You know, we used to have a facade improvement and all that, that many were disappointed, ended. So how are we supposed to deal with all these businesses? Are we going to have an application period? Is this going to be a rolling budget item? I mean, how can we manage all that? Because people are going to hear about this and they're going to be knocking down our doors, and we have to, I think, create some order in the process so we can direct them the proper way and they don't have unrealistic expectations in locating their business here or in obtaining a grant from the city.
I would tell you that, that the, the two sides to the coin are that, as Mr. Grapetian indicated, Mayor indicated, the days of redevelopment where, you know, you do things on such a large scale and you may end up subsidizing things that you otherwise, it's, it's a less precise subsidy for a broader spectrum of uses. Those days are gone, and maybe that's a good thing, because now as we get to economic development, we are, you know, using a scalpel instead of an axe. And so we will go and hunt for the things that are on the trends that we see that are going to bring people in catalyze areas. So a lot of this will be determined upon what you, as council members, say, go get me this, go, let's go find somebody like this and, and see if you can bring them in. First and foremost, we would reserve for those high-priority targets that the council would, or the Economic Development Corporation Board would, would direct, these tools would sit in the toolbox looking for those opportunities. Unlike the redevelopment program whereby it's, it's a district base, it's geographically based, and everyone in that geographic zone could theoretically apply under some set of circumstances. You know, we want to go hunting for that which we believe is going to improve Glendale in some way, as determined by you. So yes, I think we'll get folks coming in and saying, I want this, and we certainly take unsolicited offers, but I think the question's going to be, why is this somehow different than something else? If, if a convenience store came in and said, hey, I, I want a grant program, are we hunting for a convenience store? And we, we have to treat everybody the same by way of, you know, restraint of trade, but who the Economic Development Corporation invests in, you have some degree of, of discretion.
So, so they're going to be coming to us, and they're going to want to go straight to the top on these things. And, you know, to some extent, we're going to feel uncertain and unsure about the quality of their business, or feel pressure from one way or the other, is everything going to go through economic development? And is there an annual limit? Or is it an unlimited budget that some years we do, some years we don't?
That is a, we, we have $130,000 in the budget and we've carried that over, barring some, barring budget cuts of some kind, we would continue to carry that over. Now, if, if the council said we're on, on a very upward slope on economic development income and you want to increase that budget, by all means you can as part of your, your budgeting authority. But I would, I would venture a guess we're going to stick around 130 based on the other needs that the city might have. You might want to move some of that money out of economic development and move it someplace else, right? So I, I think you have that latitude. The, the folks, Tomar's team that she's a part of, those will be the people that you throw the applications towards, and they will, but I would submit to you that if, if a business comes to you and you, as, as Economic Development Corporation Board member, say, tell me the story. Tell me how this is different than anything else that's out there, tell me how you're a catalyst, tell me how you're going to, to bring and grow business around you. That's a tough question for folks to answer, and at least that, that makes them think before they say, hey, I want to go fill out that obligation or, or fill out that, that application and stand before you, because they have to submit their financials, they have to go through the- they have to go through the public scrutiny that these folks are going through, and a lot of folks don't necessarily feel comfortable doing that. Um, so, uh, there is a check and balance that is there, but I would encourage you to be economic developers yourself, and as you get those calls, throw them over.
I think, one other way in, uh, looking at these issues are, uh, is that, if you come to Glendale and tell me, "I'm putting 2.5 million dollars, investing 2.5 million dollars in your business and you're asking for 40,000 dollars and we want that using here," that's how you, you can pick and choose between different applications. Uh, they all have their own funds invested first, then we are investing with them, very small portion, like with the Antaeus, it's like 1.5% of what they're investing, just to help them out. And we, we went after them, we wanted them in Glendale. Uh, the high-end restaurant, what was, this, this is a really, uh, uh, nice title, it's very, very creative. Upscale, fine, but yet casual. It's, this, this is a very fine title, so, yeah, it's, uh, if, if we wanted a, uh, you know, upscale restaurant on, 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 on Central and the space is there and they're investing 1.2 million, 1.3 million dollars, they're asking 50,000 a year, I would, I would, I would go that route. And that's how we can pick and choose between different businesses. And also, we have to also put it out there that how much budget do we have every year so we don't have unlimited funds for every other business that's coming in. And it depends who it is, I mean, maybe we can borrow from some of our enterprises and fund somebody else that we really want in Glendale, so. Think that's the way I would look at it, if it's, if it's my fund, if it's my money, so.
I, I think what I'm, I'm hearing is that we, we need to put parameters of some sort on, on a, a, a change like this or a motion like this so that, uh, in the future, um, businesses that come in will know exactly where we are, how we're doing this, if there's a cap on it.
Right now, the cap is 40, and that's why Butterscotch has its own operating covenant that, that secures it as opposed to the others. So, based on the direction given previous, I, I, I think you, you have that there and to Mr. Garpetian's point, yeah, when you have to put your money up too, that, that is a self-regulating, uh, factor for a lot of businesses, it really is.
So if I may, thank you, and, uh, my position's different from my colleagues. Going to talk about Antaeus first and this will be very short. I don't know that I need to explain too much about why Antaeus is, I'm going to treat differently, because, um, it's, it's art, it's performing art, it's something that we need to be involved with promoting as, as a matter of public policy all the time, especially in outfit as prestigious as they are. Um, it's really not a business enterprise, not in the sense that, you know, they're out there to make, you know, they're not going to be on the New York Stock Exchange anytime soon. So, we were helping them out, um, because we really want a first-rate performing art group in, uh, Glendale. So I'm going to support Antaeus being in Glendale and support this grant. With respect to the brewery and the restaurant, I'm very excited about you being in Glendale. I will be very happy, I'll be patronizing you, I'll be encouraging everyone to patronize you, but at the end of the day, I'm not convinced that the city of Glendale should be in the business of giving out money to restaurants or breweries. I appreciate the explanation and the reference you made to Chipotle, I, I, I understand that that was a, so, sort of a way saying that you've been pushing us to bring restaurants and we're bringing you a restaurant. And I, that's good, and restaurants should come to Glendale because of everything that Glendale has to offer, and we have a lot to offer. Um, and I think we're, we're, we're at a, at a stage where it's, we're a very attractive market. We don't have to necessarily come in with public monies, you know, public dollars to encourage a restaurant or, or, or a brewery, restaurant, um, to want to establish themselves in, in Glendale. I'm sure that both, um, both entities are going to be very happy about being in Glendale if they ultimately choose to be in Glendale, and they, they are in Glendale, but, uh, I don't think the, the public funds need to be involved with this. So, I'm, I'm going to vote against, uh, against that.
I have a motion. Uh, we, do we need to take each one separately?
Well, because I
Based on Councilwoman Sinanian's, uh, comment, uh, it probably makes sense to move A, 1A and B together, because 1 is the guideline, 1A are the guidelines, uh, B is the, the Antaeus agreement, and C, D, and E relate to, um, the brewery and the Butterscotch.
Okay, all right, so do I have a motion for?
So what's the, I'm sorry.
Does he like the guidelines?
The guidelines, yes, I guess we need to
Be in favor of them.
What do the guidelines say again? What are the contours of the guidelines?
And the guidelines are the, the 40,000 dollar grant and then the eligibility and how those funds would be dispersed.
So you would respectfully, you would, I would imagine, vote yes on the
Guidelines.
Guidelines in order to facilitate Antaeus.
Sure, yes. So I'll move the guidelines.
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, I, I would recommend that we just make one clarification in the guidelines, and that's pertaining to the 25% match, that there just be a little additional clarification, uh, put in that, based on the, uh, presentation today and reading and through it now. So would that amendment to the motion to further clarify the 25% match within the guidelines as part of the program requirement?
I'm sorry, what does that mean? You, you want to further clarify the 25%?
Further clarify, oh, okay.
So clarify.
I think what, what she's saying, the guidelines are in the packet, don't, don't contain the 25% match, and as just explained by, uh, Mr. Manukin, that's, that's
So I'll move the item with the 25% clarification included in it.
Yeah, the 25% is in the presentation.
Yes, right, yes, exactly.
Okay, so that's 1A and B.
Here are the guidelines and 1B is Antaeus, so you can move those together if you want, if you choose.
Okay, so I have a motion.
Second.
Yes, so both.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman, Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes, and then, um, the, uh, 1D approving
Uh, 1C. 1C, you can take 1C separately from D and E or take them together.
I'll move 1C, D, and E.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman, Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
No.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Thank you.
Move to adjourn for the council.
Second.
To adjourn for the EDC.
Second.
Second.
Second, we are adjourned, thank you.